... technology that one serendipitously will help our maintenance department. There was one company that had fallen off another contract that we had used to give to them, and we were kind of like, "Well, what will do with this?"
Hello, everybody. My name is Brooke, and I am a student in the Academy for Media, Arts, and Technology at RL Turner High School. I am pleased to bring you this month's edition of the Board Announcements for the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Creteview High School is very excited to be hosting College Night for all the high schools inside CFB. It will be held on September 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Many colleges and universities from across the country will be there, so make arrangements for your high schooler to join us at this great event. Mark your calendars, everyone. October 2nd will be an early release day for staff development. Here is the schedule for your students' school. Elementary schools will start at their regular time at 7:40 a.m. and will be released early at 10:40. All middle schools will go from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and high school's schedule will be from 8:20 a.m. until 11:20 a.m. Please make arrangements to pick up your students at the scheduled release times. Do you love CFB? Why not become a community ambassador? Training will be on September 17th and October 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Dinner will be provided on both nights. For more information, please call (972) 968-6186. Once again, that number is (972) 968-6186. Thank you. Well, that's it for tonight's announcements. Our next regular school board meeting will be on Thursday, October 3rd at 7:00 p.m., and our next work-study session will be held on Thursday, September 19th at 6:30 p.m. Both meetings are held in the Administration Building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. Good night.
2013. Thank you all for being here. At this time, if you would please stand and join us as Randy Shackman leads our opening prayer, and remain standing as Nancy Watton leads us in the pledge to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag.
Keep your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on us this evening as we meet to deliver business related to our schools. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve our community and serve students and to serve families. Lord, tonight, we're grateful that we can honor the city of Carrollton and that they are here with us. We just ask your blessings on our meeting, on our deliberations, and on the actions that we will take. May all be done to improve schools, improve education, improve the Carrollton Farmers Branch District, and to serve you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Before we recite the pledge to our country, let's give our thoughts to the men and women who are sacrificing their lives to keep us safe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to the goal of high achievement for all of our students. And the board uses this guide as we conduct this board meeting through deliberation, actions, and we want you to be able to see all of our deliberations, actions of the board in open section. The only exception may be that we may hold some discussion in closed session, which is authorized and stipulated by the Texas Government Code, Section 551, which is commonly known as the Open Meeting Act. And these items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all of our board members are here with the exception of Mr. Frank Shore and Richard Fleming, who are out of town, and Mr. John Matthews will be joining us within 10 or 15 minutes. Therefore, we do constitute a quorum, and we can conduct business on behalf of the school district. Also, we want you to always be aware that as board members, we are individually committed to continuously improving ourselves by participation in appropriate continuing education programs. As required by Board Policy, BBD Local, as of today's date, each board member is on target for completing and exceeding the annually required continuing education credit hours. That being said, we will then move on to Agenda Item 2, which is recognition, a special guest, and announcement. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board, audience, welcome. You know, we are getting back into the school mode, so I thought we'd start tonight with a little test. Is everybody ready? Okay. Get your brains ready. Get your smartphones ready, okay, because I know everybody's going to Google this. We'll get started here, but I'd like for you to think for a minute for, what does the acronym VIP stand for? Well, you don't have to answer. Look on your phone. What does it stand for? Think about it. You know, there are over 140 different ways you can use VIP. Okay? So here's just a few that I Googled. Vehicle Inspection Program. That's probably not our VIP. Visual Identity Program. Probably not our VIP. Very Informed Peers. Okay, pretty good. Very Impatient Person. All those people that are trying to get me to speed along. But my favorite, Very Into Pizza. Well, certainly none of those describe our VIPs, because in CFB, our VIP means Very Important Professional. We are here tonight to celebrate our CFB VIPs, and this is our way of saying thank you for all that you do. To our very important people who make high achievement happen for all students. So friends and family, please stand when your very important person is introduced. And now at this time, Mr. Goode, would you please join me in front to honor our very important pros?
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Burns. My name is Kim Chow, Principal of Blair Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Iris Ramos. Mrs. Ramos is currently a second-grade teacher at Blair. She joined the CFB team in 2004 and has taught various primary grades. She is a native of Guam, which is where her teaching career began in kindergarten. When I asked why she decided to become a teacher, Iris shared with me that growing up in Guam, her family told her that she had limited options in terms of a career. She had to choose from either being a doctor, a lawyer, a nurse, an engineer, a teacher. Of course, she chose wisely, and chose one of the toughest of professions as well as the most rewarding, and that is being a teacher. Her aunt told her that if she became a teacher, that she'd have summers off. We all certainly know better than that. Mrs. Ramos is one of the hardest-working teachers around. Her colleagues used words to describe her, such as dedicated, involved, helpful, patient, outstanding, positive, a resource, and a techie. Yes, Iris is our resident techie. She's an exemplary teacher for using and integrating technology into the classroom. And as another teacher said, she is always willing to help those who are not as technology savvy. Last year, Mrs. Ramos spearheaded a grant-writing proposal to the Educational Foundation to purchase iPod Touches for second grade for instructional use. The team won the grant, and they're implementing this year. Another colleague said Mrs. Ramos is deserving of the VIP recognition because she is always 100% dedicated to her job and the well-being of her students. One can walk by her classroom at any given time, and she is always on, taking advantage of every single teaching moment. All of the comments expressed by her colleagues paints a picture of the kind of teacher Miss Ramos is. This is why Blair voted her as our Blair's VIP. When I asked Iris why she became a teacher and what keeps her coming back year after year, she said, "I come back year after year because I enjoy helping students learn. Having the opportunity to work with every talented and supportive staff is another reason. I have learned so much now and over the past few years from colleagues. I don't think I would be the teacher I am today if it weren't for everyone at Blair." Well, Blair is certainly fortunate to have Mrs. Ramos as part of our teaching staff, and CFB is fortunate to have her as a bright spot. Tonight, Mrs. Ramos is accompanied by her husband Dennis, her mom Rose, and her sister Jenny, as well as her nephew and niece, as well as a group of Blair representatives. We are very proud of Iris, and we welcome her into the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening. My name is Phil Jackson, the Principal at Carrollton Elementary School. The renowned poet Emily Dickinson once penned her lofty goals and aspirations in the following verses. "If I can stop one heart from breaking, I shall not live in vain. If I can ease one lightheaking, or cool one pain, or help one fainting robin unto his nest again, I shall not live in vain." Carrollton Elementary's VIP could easily claim such words as her own. I am pleased and honored to introduce our newest member in the very important profession I'd like to share what her colleagues said about Miss Estrada. Energetic and flexible. She willingly changes and adapts effortlessly to new grade levels and expectations. Compassionate and caring. She's dedicated to each student's success. Spunky and fun-loving. She always brings joy and fills the room with laughter. Optimistic and positive. She seldom complains, seeing a possible problem simply as an opportunity brimming with solutions. Leading and directing. She assists with key programs and activities of the school each year. Hard-working and effective. She participates in virtually every aspect of the school, and her students have the highest bilingual reading rates on STAR in the district. Reflective and spiritual. She analyzes her actions and always strives to be a better teacher, wife, mother, daughter, and friend. One of her students, Kenya, said of her, "You deserve to have this honor because you taught us a lot," like how to show evidence so we could be ready for the Reading STAR. "You taught us new words and how to say things more sophisticated." Melissa said, "Miss Estrada is kind with us, the students. She cares about everyone and everything." Still, another student, Amelia, said, "She is a great teacher. She was not mean." Well, a little. The board will have a peek later this evening at Miss Estrada in action, as she is part of the video about safety nets, showing how our time works. Also, I just found out tonight, Dr. Burns, you were her principal as she went to Perry Middle School. She's a CFB product.
Success.
There you go. Yeah, CFB product. I think that is. So you see, by the way, she went to Carrollton Elementary School and is now teaching there. I think that's neat. So you see, Christina Estrada and Emily Dickinson really could be kindred spirits, sharing life's basic ideas and goals and raising their voices to chant. "If I could open one child's mind and lift their eyes above, or bring some joy to downcast souls with smiles or hugs of love. If I could help one faltering soul or take away their pain, be faithful to friends and inspiring the students, then I too shall not have lived in vain." Carrollton Elementary and CFB are proud to honor Christina Estrada as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Mr. Goode, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. My name is Susan Machado, Principal of Farmers Branch Elementary. I would like to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of teaching for the second time, Miss Virginia Virginia began her teaching career in Columbia, teaching French horn and playing in the orchestras. When she returned to the United States, she became a bilingual teacher in CFB at Farmers Branch Elementary, which has been her home for 21 years. She'll receive the longevity stifle as a bonus, too. Just an extra point. Virginia has taught bilingual kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grades, which demonstrates the type of teacher Virginia is, one willing to teach wherever you need her. So in June of 2012, when I had a late opening in my music position, I knew who could fill this need for FBE. Virginia embraced her new position as our music teacher with a positive attitude and can-do spirit. She spent her summers attending training so she could be up to speed on the latest and greatest in music education. She is the proud mother of a son who is attending college in South Texas and the proud mother of Rowley, her precious Dodson. Virginia's colleagues had the following things to say about her. Virginia deserves this honor for numerous reasons. She devotes her time and energy in positively impacting the lives of our students by exposing them to the art of music. One can see her enthusiasm and dedication through the music activities done in her class. Every morning and every day after school, you see Virginia carrying a large bucket to the lounge to wash recorders. Now, that's dedication. She comes to school early, stays late, and you can even find her there on the weekends. Virginia does whatever it takes. Some of our FBE Mustangs shared their thoughts with me about Miss Sandoval. When I asked why they liked music, Christian responded, "I like the games we play." I must have made a funny face, and he said, "But they're not dangerous games. They're singing games." "I also love playing the recorder," and she lets us echo her notes. Jenny stated, "When we don't understand the notes," which happens a lot, "Miss Sandoval explains it to us in a nice way." Farmers Branch Elementary and CFB are fortunate to have Miss Virginia Sandoval as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the board. My name is Lori Parker, and I have the honor of serving as the Principal at Ferno Elementary. The staff at Ferno Elementary is proud to recognize Miss Katie Kemp for the award of the very important profession Katie grew up in Richardson and is a graduate of Burkner High School. She always has a smile on her face and will say, "Can you tell? I was on drill team. This is my drill team's smile." There it is, right there. After high school, Katie attended Texas A&amp;M University. Okay? I have a pause in there, Katie, for everyone to do that sound, okay? Katie is starting her third year as a teacher, all three years at Ferno. Why did Katie want to become a teacher? "My first-grade teacher loved me. She invested in me and made learning fun." And I have permission to share this, right, Katie? Okay. "I am dyslexic and ADD, and a lot of teachers, I could tell, were frustrated with me and my slow learning, especially after my very bright brother, who is here this evening. Many times, people would marvel out loud how different we are. He learned and was good. I was dumb and talked too much. 'I want to be like my first-grade teacher,' said Katie. 'I want to be that teacher for other students.' I know how hard reading is. I get it. I love my students and want them to come to school. I'm also a child at heart, and I love that I get to come to school every day to hear their creativity and have fun." Katie never says no when given a challenge, whether it is a challenging situation involving a student or the biggest challenge of all, teaching teachers how to dance. She approaches these challenges with a positive attitude, ready and willing to do whatever necessary to get the job done. She truly cares about all her students and her Ferno family and wants them to be happy and successful. What does this high-energy kindergarten teacher do in her spare time? She tutors and after the bell, teaches dance in Richardson, and one of her Ferno students even makes the drive down Spring Valley to attend Katie's dance class. Katie also enjoys hiking with Brad and going on mission trips. She has been to Peru four times to help build an orphanage. Katie is described by her peers as a bundle of energy, that is such a breath of fresh air. She has a great sense of humor, and the students just love her. Katie does everything with enthusiasm. She is always trying to do more for her students. She never stops learning. She is the best teammate ever, even if she is an Aggie. Miss Turner said that. And our favorite thing about Katie, you just never know when she will bust into a dance move. I asked Katie, "When your kindergarten students graduate from high school and college and think about Miss Kemp, what do you want them to remember?" Katie said, "I hope they remember me like I remember my first-grade teacher. I want them to remember that I loved them and understood their learning and did everything I could do to make it fun and just for them." Katie knows that teacher matters. Katie's smile brightens our day. Her genuine happiness shines in her room on every student's face. This is why Ferno Elementary and Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD are fortunate to have Katie Kemp as a member of the very important profession of
Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Matt Warnock. I am honored to serve as the Principal at Barbara Bush Middle School, International Baccalaureate World School. And I am honored to present to you Mrs. Latoya Dawson as a member of the very important profession of teaching. This is Mrs. Dawson's ninth year as a Bush Bronco and 10th in the middle-school math classroom. She has taught all three grade levels, from remedial classes to on-level classes, as well as advanced classes. She also serves as our math department manager. She received her bachelor's in Business Administration from Nichols State University, but we are very thankful that she became a math teacher instead. She is married to Brandon Dawson, Sr., and has three very cute kiddos, Ladarius, Brandon Jr., and Joshua, all who are with us this evening. When asked, her colleagues are not short of words when describing her. Her peers on the campus and at the district level had the following to say about her. She is a dedicated educator who manages to stay both professional and positive. As a coworker, she is a reliable team player that you can always count on, and as a teacher, she has the capability to see the best in her students and hold high expectations while differentiating to their many needs. Mrs. Dawson is a dedicated, hard-working teacher that is always striving to do her best not only for her students, but also her colleagues. She works diligently to improve her craft with a focus always on the students. She works hard to study every topic she teaches to further her knowledge of math and does a great job at encouraging and supporting her co-teachers to do the same. When thinking about Mrs. Dawson, the following words come to mind: diligent, leader, change agent, processor, thinker, focused, and learner. She sets high expectations for her department by modeling what master teachers do to help improve the teaching and learning of mathematics. For me personally, although she has had help, I attribute a significant portion of the growth and success of our BBMS math department to her dedication, her commitment, and her leadership. When I spoke with students about her, they had the following to share. Before moving on, she makes sure each and every student understands. She helps kids when they need it, and she cares about our well-being. Mrs. Dawson is a great teacher because she is fun-loving, very patient, and kind towards me and the others. She is also my favorite, and she left a little smiley face on there. She even came to school when she was sick to teach me. I never liked math because I never had a good teacher. She changed that. She is not like other teachers I've had. She doesn't teach to you. She teaches with you. Thank you, Mrs. Dawson, for all that you do for all in the Bronco family. CFB and Barbara Bush Middle School are fortunate that you have chosen us as your professional home. Congratulations on being selected as a member of the very important profession
For our next recognition tonight, we have some very, we're honored to have some visitors from our city council of Carrollton, along with the mayor. So I'm going to ask the mayor at this time, Mayor Matthew Marchant, and the city council members from Carrollton to come forward so we can read a resolution for you. Miss Nancy Watton, I believe, is going to read our resolution tonight.
Now it be resolved by the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees that we make a commitment to celebrate and honor our community which supports our school system. Tonight, we recognize such a community. The city of Carrollton, Texas celebrates its centennial year in 2013. On June 14th, 1913, Carrollton voted to incorporate as a city. This community's rich history began long before that time, with the first settlers arriving in the 1840s. According to history documents, the early settlers were individuals with incredible courage and strength, willing to risk everything for their dream of a better life for their families. This dream included providing a community enriched by the strength of a quality education system. The tradition of excellence in education began when the early settlers built the first school building in Carrollton in 1856. Then in 1902, the community established the Carrollton Independent School District. Following the growth of the city, the enrollment of schools in Carrollton has increased from 200 students in 1914 to over 26,000 students in the entire Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Though the size of the schools and the name of the district have changed, the citizens' support of the local public schools, ensuring a strong community for future generations, has remained a constant for the city of Carrollton, Texas. Benjamin Franklin once said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." As we celebrate the centennial year of establishment of the city of Carrollton, we reflect back with thankfulness on the early settlers of our community that invested in public education. The current Board of Trustees values the partnership and support from the local government officials in the city of Carrollton, Texas. The commitment to providing a quality education is as strong now as it was in the earliest days of the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees honors the city of Carrollton, Texas on their 100 years of excellence.
Well, thank you. I'll accept that on behalf of 100 years of Carrollton citizens. Thank you very much to Dr. Burns and President Goode and the members of the Board of Trustees. It's an honor for us to be here tonight. We're excited about, you know, the history of Carrollton and all of the good things that we all know about this community. On behalf of our council members, thank you for honoring this occasion. It's not us that we're honoring. We're honoring the community, and we know that. You know, the city and the school district work inextricably. Your experience in this community is determined in large part by how well the city does their job and how well the schools do their job. And, you know, tonight was real, it was very great to see the VIP presentation, and you went to Carrollton High School, I mean Carrollton Elementary, and then now you're teaching here. I mean, that's part of the, part of the strength of the community that we have here. And the partnership that this school district has had with our city has been very, very strong. It's part of what has made this the best community to live in in the world. And I know that that commitment is there and will continue for years and years to come. And again, thank you very much for honoring this occasion. We're very proud of the city and hope that our partnership continues for forever. Thank you.
Congratulations. That's awesome. Awesome. Very good to see you.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, that concludes our recognitions tonight. We would like to extend a welcome. I think we have some visitors here from Brookhaven College. If some from Brookhaven College are visiting with us tonight, would you please stand if you're here from Brookhaven College? Okay, maybe you're coming to a different meeting. Well, you're welcome to any of our meetings that you'd like to come to, but we always welcome our guests and students at Brookhaven and other universities often join us, and so they're always invited. We do have some announcements that we're going to share at the recess or when we break. We also show those at the beginning of the meeting now. Just kind of helps move the meeting along. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Goode at this time, and that concludes our welcome and recognitions. and recognitions.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. It is truly an honor to be able to recognize such unique teachers that we have in this school district, because we truly realize it's the teachers who make the difference in the lives of these children. We can sit up here and acknowledge our role, but unfortunately, we seldom ever get to see those kids. And so we are so indebted and so thankful to all of you who personally, on a daily basis, influence all of our childrens. So we can never say thank you too many times, but thank you once again. And also, I think the city -- they had another meeting, I think. They had to leave. But anyway, if you live in Carrollton, I can speak to you, because I know we have some Carrollton residents here. And it's such a great thrill to have relationships with the cities. The things that we try to accomplish so many times cannot occur unless we have a strong relationship with the cities. And having that relationship with the city council and the mayor, we are able to accomplish some exceptional things. And I'm always thrilled that we have that opportunity to be able to say thank you. Even though they may be recognizing 100 years, we are recognizing their relationship because of public education. With that, at this time, we're going to take a brief recess for those of you who do not wish to spend the rest of the evening with us. You would find it enjoyable and entertaining, I assure you. Therefore, we will take a recess for approximately 10 minutes, and we will reconvene at approximately 7:45. Ms. Scrivener, please ensure that the records show that Mr. Matthews has joined us in the meeting. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind the audience that the board encourages comments from our citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to address the board, either individually or as a representative group, may do so during Agenda Item 4A. If you will, you can fill out a form that you'll find as you entered the boardroom and give that to Ms. Scrivener. With that being said, we will move on to Agenda Item 3A, Presentation on Student Achievement Safety Nets. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode, members of the board. As you know, at each meeting, we highlight our student achievement programs and the things that we are doing to address all students' needs academically as well as affectively. Tonight's safety nets has a little bit of both in that, but, you know, it's no secret that our goal is high achievement for all students. All students means all. And so our safety nets, we want to make sure that they're all being successful in our school district. So having said that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bailey to introduce tonight's program. Ms. Bailey?
Dr. Burns. There's a growing body of research related to how children succeed and how schools and parents can help support the non-cognitive character traits that children need for lifetime success. Some of those traits are optimism, grit, zest, self-control, and gratitude. We have found that unless there is affective and physical safety for students, learning cannot happen. To meet our goal of high achievement for all students in CFB ISD, we have established safety nets to improve the learning environment. Safety nets are those strategies and programs outside of the academic curriculum that provide both academic and effective support to students in our schools. Tonight, Joe Gillan, Executive Director of CTE Counseling and Nurses, will share our student achievement presentation focused on three of our many safety nets for students and how these safety nets impact achievement. Thank you. Ms. Gillan?
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for the introduction. Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, and esteemed board members. I'd like to recognize my special team behind me, Katie, Steve Ann, and Michelle. Thank you for being here tonight. This evening, I would like to present to you a snapshot of the collaborative efforts that we provide for the students in our district through three safety nets chosen: Project Graduation, Our Time, and Avid. As you know, the goal of CFB is high achievement for all students. Please see the four supporting objectives listed on the screen. Our diverse student population faces a myriad of challenges which can impact their academic success. Dr. Ronald Ferguson from Harvard Graduate School of Education and noted economist wrote a poem which paints a picture of so many struggling students. At this time, I would like to share the poem, "Hardships and Distractions." I'm going to have my dinner at my grandma's house today. My mom is staying late for work to make some extra pay. I've got a lot of homework, but I'm worried about my mom, so that makes it hard to concentrate. My mind feels like a bomb. I've also got to make sure that I wash some clothes to wear, and I've got to get the stuff I need to tame my crazy hair. And while I'm doing that, I'll use the phone to make some calls to tell my friends the time and place for Friday at the mall. And sometime between now and then, I've got to get some dough, because I ain't going to the mall all destitute and poor. I know that I should focus on that test I've gotten, math, but my English papers due soon too. I need some help real bad. Some teachers think I just don't care, and some think I'm not trying. I think I'm caught in a trap. Sometimes I just start crying. But no one ever sees my tears, because I just showed the tough side. I like to seem real in control, if not book-smart, then streetwise. I wish my teachers understood what it's like to be me, to see my whole life the way I do, the whole complexity. They'd see how hard it is to keep so many things in focus. They'd see how blurry things can get, how stuff can seem so hopeless. My teacher said I best be ready when I take that test in math, but I ain't got no help at home. I never knew my dad. I want to go to college, but for that, I need good grades. Based on what my grades are now, there may not be a way. I don't know what I'm going to do. I need someone who's wise to help me figure out which way to turn, to empathize. But let me stop daydreaming, because I've got a lot of work to do. If I don't start my homework soon, I never will get through. If I try and still can't do it, then I just won't hand it in. But if I don't try, I'll never know, and here it goes, I'll begin. Every day, I pray to find someone to guide me and to care. Is there any chance that you could be an answer to my prayer? As illustrated so poignantly in this poem, relationships, they matter. Through Project Graduation, we have invested in our students and in their stories. We do this through three different programs that I would like to highlight. First, TAP, which stands for Tax Accelerated Preparation. TAP meets four times per year. During these four-week evening sessions, the students and tutors work in a small-group environment. This allows the tutor and the student to build a relationship and helps the student to excel in their studies, both academically and emotionally. This safety net helps students that need to pass their exit exam and receive their diploma. We turn no one away, including those students who do not graduate within four years. We continue to shepherd and provide a safe environment to meet the ultimate goal, graduation. Next, our graduation teams were developed in order to identify and meet the varying needs and challenges of our seniors. The teams come together once a month at our high school campuses to troubleshoot and come up with a plan to help each student meet the goal of graduation. The teams are comprised of the principal, assistant principals, counselors, paraprofessionals, and central office district personnel. The time commitment is extensive, but well worth the investment. The idea behind the teams is that we all come together to support the student and ensure success, high achievement for all students. And finally, our ninth-grade initiative cultivates a learning environment that is welcoming and at the same time effective in increasing the number of students that continue on to graduate. This initiative originated from the realization that the transition from middle school to high school posed a unique situation that merited additional support. The initiative is preventative. It assists freshmen in obtaining enough credits to become a sophomore, which significantly lowers the dropout rate. Counselors, administrators, and teachers collaborate to identify the students who are struggling in their coursework, absences, disruptive behavior, and finding ways to not participate in the learning environment. Once identified, the team develops a course of action to help meet the needs of the individual students. Again, it's about the relationship. And now, please direct your attention to the screen as Joe LaPuma, Principal of Creekview High School, will describe the function of the graduation teams and how the system supports the students. Assistant Principal at RL Turner, Jeanette Papadopoulos, will additionally review some specific strategies provided to help freshmen become sophomores via the ninth-grade initiative.
The role of the graduation team at Creekview High School, and for that matter, the other schools in the district, is really to get to know the story of each individual student that comes through our doors. We need to know the story of the students, and we need to be able to provide the opportunities to support those students in any area that they may need. Graduation is the end line, and that's our job. It's our job to find a way to help the students that need that extra support to get to that end line or get to the finish line. In essence, it's about students, and it's about bringing a large group of people together to support the students and to know their story and to find a way to meet the needs of those individual students. Life goes on for our 500 graduates, our 500 students who we expect to graduate each year. And there's things that happen in life that sometimes requires us to intervene, requires us to find a way to think outside the box to get them to that graduation line. And it can look a lot of different ways. It could mean helping a student who is having to work, helping a student who is having financial issues with their family. It could mean helping a student that could be having health issues. But often, it's academic issues. We're the academic experts at our school, and our goal is high student achievement and to get them across the line. So we find ways to make and help students graduate. And it looks a lot of different ways, and really, it takes a great team at our campus and throughout the district to think outside the box and to really meet the needs of the students wherever those needs may be. An example of a student that we worked with and that has gone on to graduate, there was a student that -- it's kind of a sad story, but this is some of the stuff that we deal with on a regular basis. The student wasn't coming home at night, and mom was really at a loss. The student wasn't coming home, the student wasn't coming to school. So it took our counselors, it took outside agencies, and it took even our school resource officer to find out where the student was, to really reach out and to provide support for the student, to bring them back to school, which ultimately is important. But we also had to solve other issues along the way, because the students are dealing with a lot of other issues. So we had to bring that student back to school, but we had to deal with some other issues that this student was having on a regular basis, and not coming home for a week or two at a time. And of course, academically, they fall further and further behind. So the counselors would actually look for this student, they would find this student, they would, you know, I say beat the bushes, so to speak, but actually, that's what they would do. They would talk to mom, they would kind of backtrack to find out where this student was. And academically, at some point, academics is not the most important thing. We're looking out for the benefit of the individual. And when academics, when it's time for the academics to come in line, to fall in line, we're there to provide them that support so we can help them graduate. So the graduation teams in our district and at our campus produce students that are ready to meet the challenges after graduation. The end line is so very important, the graduation line is so very important, but we propel them to get them ready for the next level, whether that's college, whether that's a trade school, or whatever that is in order for them to be successful.
The ninth-grade initiative has been a huge success for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, but specifically at Creekview High School, we implemented an array of strategies to be sure that our ninth graders reach their 10th grade successfully. So I'll begin by saying that our number-one success factor was our principal, Mr. Joe LaPuma. He's awesome, he's a wonderful principal and very supportive. I will say that it is a process, and that process began by meeting with the principals, our middle school principals, and gathering data and information about our at-risk ninth-grade students. So we were well aware of the students that were coming to us their ninth-grade year. From there, we began meeting with our students that are at risk, calling the parents in, and making sure that we made it clear what the expectations were for that school year. Our teachers really bought into the lost-at-school book study that we had, and they realized that one of the main key factors was building relationships with our kids, and also that they needed to make sure that the students stayed in class. So our last resort was DMC and out-of-school suspension. We tried an array of strategies within the classroom, and as a 10th-grade assistant principal, I taught my teachers different ways to deal with the students' behavior issues, if any, and then also asked those teachers to send me emails and come and talk to me about the different issues that they were having with the students. Not only did we have teacher buy-in, but we monitored our students' attendance and grades consistently, weekly, in cooperation with the ninth-grade assistant principal, the transition counselor, and the other counselors that helped us with this initiative. We had Avid College tutors that came out on a daily basis and tutored our students throughout the day, because we know that if our ninth-grade students are not successful their first year, there's a high probability that they will drop out. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure that our team works hard all year long and monitors their progress consistently so that they can be successful.
I was persistent, and if you believe in yourself, you can do it, because everything is possible if you just believe. I made it.
To illustrate the effectiveness of our programs, please refer to the graph which compares our four-year graduation rates over the last six years. Nearly 90% of economically disadvantaged students graduated in the class of 2012 within four years, as opposed to 72% in 2007. If we were to look specifically at the actual number of economically disadvantaged students who graduated with the class of 2012, we would see that the number has more than doubled since 2007, from 359 to 764 students. The four-year graduation rate for all students in 2007 was 80.3%, in 2012, 90.5%. This is cause for celebration, as we are now seeing more and more students walk across the stage. In CFB ISD, we not only recognize the importance of relationships with our oldest students, but also provide safety nets for our very youngest. This is administered through Relationships to Improve Education, better known as Our Time. A cadre of individuals at each elementary campus have been trained to carry out the initiative at our 24 campuses. Each week on a specified day, there is a 10- to 15-minute lesson. Our Time has been shown to improve behavior, reduce bullying, raise self- R-TIME has been shown to improve behavior, reduce bullying, raise self-esteem, and accelerate learning. This is the framework of which we build upon in order to strengthen communication skills and teach relationship-building strategies. In addition to providing R-TIME in our elementary schools, our middle school students participate in Negotiate, the R-TIME for Middle School. During this time, they are challenged to discuss real-life circumstances in real-world situations. Now, we will hear from Susan Machado, Principal of Farmer's Branch Elementary, who will discuss the history of the R-TIME program as well as its impact on the campus. A demonstration of an R-TIME lesson with a group of students from Carrollton Elementary will follow.
Our time began at Farmer's Branch Elementary in January of 2009. We were lucky to be chosen as the pilot school for Carrollton Farmer's Branch as we were doing a cohort with Region 10. And we implemented, beginning that January, immediately with our staff. And what R-TIME has done for our school is it's given us a common language so that students know when we ask them to behave in using their R-TIME manners, they know, no matter where they are, they know exactly what we mean. For example, sometimes in the cafeteria, we see some maybe undesired behaviors and I can simply say, "All right, are we showing our R-TIME manners?" And kids immediately know exactly what I mean and change their behavior. So, it's really given us a common language for our school. R-TIME at our school is held every Monday from 7:45 to 8 o'clock in the morning. It's the first thing. And we chose Mondays because it just makes sense that we start the week on a good note and that anything that might have happened over the weekend, we help remind students of our expectations at our school and it's just a great way to start off the week. Some of the feedback that we've received regarding R-TIME is the first semester we implemented in that January, that was the second semester, we actually had a parent that came to us and asked if we were teaching manners. And we asked, "Well, we teach character education," and we asked specifically what they were referring to. And the dad said that his child was saying "Yes, ma'am" and "No, sir" at home and using manners. And we kind of laughed and said, "That's because we've been teaching that in R-TIME." So, we were glad to see that the kids were making that connection at home, that R-TIME is just not to be used at school, but that they were transferring that to home. So, parents were very thankful that we were teaching manners.
So, today, we're going to do R-TIME just like we do every week, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, what are some of the rules when you get with your partners, that you don't know who your partner's going to be? What are some of the things we do?
You have to use eye contact.
Make eye contact with your partner.
You have to be neat to me.
Neat to me.
Like shake hands and tell your name.
Shake hands and use each other's names.
Kind of like listen to what they're saying and let them go.
What happens if we have a new student, if a new student comes in and you don't know their name?
You ask.
You ask them what their name is, okay? So, I'm going to give you your cards, you're going to find your partner without talking, okay? And one thing that I want you to do when you get with your partner is talk about, what was your favorite thing that you did this summer? Okay? So, that's what you're going to do when you get with your partners. And are we going to talk?
Yeah.
Are you ready? And before you flip over, I want you to, what happens if you don't have a partner? If you can't find your partner?
You ask for another group if you can.
You ask the other group if they can.
Hello, my name is Joanna.
Hello, my name is Morgan. The best thing I did this summer is like, I used to go to a pool because this place where I went, where I used twice, when I went, it was like a big...
The last safety net we will be discussing this evening is Advancement via Individual Determination, Avid. Avid is a program that recognizes determination and persistence with the end goal of all students graduating from high school. The program itself provides a nucleus within the school system so that Avid strategies are utilized school-wide. Here is a snapshot of the Avid student profile. While Avid is accepting of all students, it is uniquely designed to provide support for first-generation students who have the potential but may not otherwise have the resources to reach their goals. The students are assisted by the campus coordinator, site team, and classroom tutors in order to embed the Avid strategies into their daily lessons. Because we've had such success with our Avid tutors, tutoring has become a vital part of our TAP, Ninth Grade Initiative, and graduation teams. Another major tenet of the Avid program is the development of organizational skills that are ingrained to assist students with their high school career and also their post-secondary pursuits. Examples of these would include the art of note-taking, time management, organization through binders, and support for critical thinking through debate with specialized Did you know that 1,152 secondary students participated in the Avid program last year? Of our seniors in Avid, 100% applied to a four-year university and 91.5% were accepted. 94.3% of our seniors in Avid took the SAT, which is a huge success, given that 10% of the ERG is dependent upon SAT scores. Richard Hyde, Avid Coordinator at Ted Polk Middle School, will now discuss how the strategies provided by the Avid program have positively impacted students. We will also hear from two former Avid students, Francisco and Dominique, who participated in the program at RL Turner High School. The students will review the benefits of the Avid program from their own unique perspectives.
We do a couple of things really well at Polk. I think Cornell Notes is a huge success for us. Our students use their C-notes both in Avid and in other classes and other students see them using the Cornell Notes and they say, "Hey, what's that?" And our Avid students say, "Hey, this is a great tool. For me, it helps me pull man ideas, it helps me summarize, it helps me keep an organized binder because, you know, we get a chance to have all of our things right there together." And the other students see that and they see the success that our kids have and it pushes them to also want to achieve at a higher level. Many of the teachers at our school that don't teach Avid, that just kind of are involved with our Avid kids as they have them as students in the classroom, see that our Avid kids are using Cornell Notes and using their binder as a strategy for organization and for study skills. And when they see the improvement in their grades, they naturally want to find out exactly what it is that we're doing that's specifically helping our students to achieve at a higher level.
The Junior Ambassador Program that was provided through me through Avid, it helped me meet members of the community, leaders. It let me work on my communication skills. I spoke to the mayor, to famous, or not famous, but important people in the community. And I feel like it was a good step because it prepared me to know how to speak to these type of people and not be nervous in front of them, to be able to speak to them without being nervous or being really quiet, project my voice, you know, those small little details, small little skills that you need to know as a person or as an adult once you leave high school. Avid basically is, it helped me organize myself, organize my life, basically plan everything out that I need to know. One thing that I'm very grateful for Avid is the whole process into going to college. Basically, it takes you all the way there, writing your essays, applying for FAFSA, applying on Applied Texas, applying for scholarships, all that's there. And I have to say an extra thanks to Ms. Binion because the relationship that we had, she takes you, basically, she's kind of like a mother, you know, she's always there for you, you can talk to her, you can ask for advice. And she just guides you all the way there, she'll give you the proper tools you need to go there. And, I mean, everything I need is all because of Avid and because it helped me and prepared me to get there.
I graduated in 2012 from Turner and I was part of the Avid program for all four years throughout high school. I really enjoyed all the field trips to the different universities and colleges and just taking the Cornell-style notes and having tutors coming in. It really just helped me on my own time and my first year of college, realizing I had to put aside time to do studying. And then when I'm in class, I would do my own Cornell-style notes and just like bringing my organization that I learned while in Avid and the way we would put our binders together. And a lot of it had to do with organization and time management. And being in Avid has helped me do that a lot. I'm able to manage a sorority, a job, and go to school.
In closing, let me take you back to the poem read at the beginning. "Every day I pray to find someone to guide me and to care. Is there any chance that you could be an answer to my prayer?" In CFB ISD, we provide the avenues for these valuable relationships. It really is the glue that bonds our students to the learning process. Relationships, they matter. Thank you.
Mr. Good, members of the board, that concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you, Ms. Gillen, as always, great job. Thank you to her staff for being here, absolutely. If board members have any questions, we would entertain those at this time.
Ms. Watten.
Of course, I'm very supportive of all three areas. I think it's just a great, great achievement that we have made in this district. My question is, do all the teachers have an opportunity to attend Avid training? Because I have had two grandchildren go through Avid and one is a junior at Turner right now in the Avid program. And I just see such great skills coming out of the Avid program, especially in the area of higher-level thinking and in the areas of organizational skills. And I just think this would be such a great opportunity for all children to have this kind of training.
Yes, Ms. Watten, we have a site team at each campus that's comprised of different academic teachers that support the Avid coordinator and so there's a team at the specific campus, at each of our campuses. And then the goal is during the PD periods and during trainings and presentations that Avid is always a part of those meetings and those presentations, presenting what we do with our Avid students, a lot of the skills that the students possess and learn. And so, that's part of the PD and part of our faculty meetings, yes. And the goal is to go school-wide.
Well, I know that the training of Avid teachers is fairly costly, so I recognize that it's probably impossible for us to train all the teachers, but I'm wondering if they are invited or they have an opportunity, if they wish to go into some of the staff development that Avid teachers are receiving, are they able to do that without it being cost to the district?
Well, and what we've done the last two years is we only send brand-new site team members to the training, the state training. And then we do an in-house training here in the summer for two days. And so, all of our site team members and any staff member that wishes to attend those two days to receive all the Avid training is welcome.
Oh, okay.
So, that's something new that we started about two years ago and it's been cost-effective and it's also easier when it's in-house.
Yes.
So, we've had...
That's great.
...good feedback on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I do have a couple.
Okay.
In a typical school year, how many students are impacted by these programs?
Well, as far as the safety nets with Project Graduation, that would be TAP, the graduation teams, and the ninth grade initiative, our entire ninth grade class at every campus. The graduation teams, we begin at the very beginning of the year. In fact, we had our meeting at Turner today, we'll have two more meetings tomorrow. And we discuss all of our seniors, making sure they're on track to graduate at this point. And then those that might be a little bit shaky for some students, then we start beginning troubleshooting and looking at what we're going to do to help them get to graduation in June. So, I would say that it impacts the majority of our students.
And at the elementary for R-TIME or even at middle school with Negotiate and the Avid program, if you look at all three of these safety nets, you want to venture a guess at what percent of the student population is involved?
Well, with R-TIME, Dr. Burns' directive has been all campuses do R-TIME.
All of them.
Yes, sir. And so, our principals and teachers cooperate beautifully and they really enjoy it, they know it works. It changes the culture of the school. So, as far as R-TIME and Negotiate, because all of our middle schools have also been trained, we're just entering the second year of Negotiate. So, we're still kind of refining what's going on with that. But all of our campuses and students are affected by that. Avid, it's at all of our middle schools except for Bush and every high school except for Ranch View. And that's due to the IB program.
Dr. Burns, I do have one more question.
Okay.
The cost associated with all these programs, what percent of the cost is provided by the state or federal government?
Well, federal government, none, okay? Although, you know, I guess indirectly you could say, obviously, we're supporting our kids through federal dollars for lunches and things like that, which have an indirect. But the program itself is not directly funded by any kind of federal money. And then statewide, obviously, per pupil that we get is kind of a, I guess, a nebulous way, we get X amount per kid and then we spend it in our instructional program the best way we know. So, it's kind of embedded in all of our other things. I couldn't give you a direct, exact dollar per kid for these programs. It's in our whole total program. But the cost not to do it is certainly great because we've got to get them across the stage. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, you know? High achievement for us translates, obviously, into graduation and as well as the state assessments, but graduation is what gives these kids a chance and so we've got to get them across.
But the reality is, we know that there is a direct cost that we have agreed to commit ourselves to...
Yes.
...in order to provide the programs.
Exactly. And, you know, we would certainly be remiss anytime to say it's not enough because it's not enough. I mean, we've got a lot more work to do, but it does come out of our total, obviously, operating budget to fund these programs.
Okay.
At least, I think I spoke right, Mr. Hyde, right? No federal dollars or...
There's no extra money provided by the state or the federal government to do this? Any monies we allocate to this come out of the general fund operations that we've got to pay for everything out of?
Okay. Well, we can appreciate the fact that, let's hypothetically say, we did not provide these programs, we could say there would be some additional funds available, which of course, we would spend somewhere else in another program.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
Did you say that all elementaries are now using R-TIME?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good.
Board members, any additional questions? Hearing none, we will move on. Thank you, Dr. Burns.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Gillen again, and your staff for being here tonight, and our audience for being here and staying through the student achievement presentation piece, which we thinks is pretty important, so thank you for being here.
I guess I would, there was one thing I should have said before we move on. We should encourage people in the community, on the board, and other places to take the time to go observe these programs and see what's truly going on. It's fascinating, I know, when you go into a classroom or in a lot of times with the older students at community events and you see them, you are truly impressed with the quality of their mannerism, their presentation, their comfort around other people. So, there is something to be said that we need to take ourselves personally and observe those children to feel comfort in those programs. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4A, which is Audience for Guests, which is a mechanism that the board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. As previously stated, if you wish to address the board, you need to fill out the form that's located on the table as you enter the boardroom and give that to Ms. Scrivner. Ms. Scrivner, do we have any Audience for Guests?
No, sir, we do not.
Very good. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 5, which is Comment.
Consent agenda.
Wait a minute, correction. You are correct. I missed, let me... Let me, 4B.
4B.
I went right by it. Agenda Item 4B, which is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that we use to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items that you would like to remove at this time from the Consent Agenda? Administration.
Mr. Goode, we'd like to pull number eight for some clarification, and Mr. Hyde will provide that for you after you proceed with the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Any other items you wish to remove? Do I now have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Ms. Klein.
Mr. Goode, I would make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda minus item number eight.
I have a motion from Ms. Klein. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Shackman. All those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, back to Consent Agenda 4B, Item 8. Mr. Hyde.
Yes, sir, Mr. Goode, Dr. Burns. This is an item related to the repair of a major mechanical system at the building, which is adjacent to this building across the street, as part of our Educational Service Division. It was originally a building, might remind the board, this was a building that was originally the Carrollton Christian Academy complex related to First Methodist Church across the street. The district acquired all of those facilities several years ago, I want to say over 10 years ago. And we've been limping along with that mechanical system in that separate building. That's a separate building than the one we renovated. Mr. Hibbs and the Facilities Department has been attempting to maintain the existing systems, air conditioning systems on that building. But we've finally reached the point where it's just beyond maintaining and repairing any longer. While this isn't one of our direct instructional campuses, we take a lot of detailed examination about how much money we spend to maintain and support it. And we believe there's enough functional activities remaining in that building that warrants repairing that air conditioning system. We have an Adult Ed program over there. A significant amount of our Educational Service Division has offices and programs over there. And if we're going to utilize the facility and if we're going to maintain it for our community, we believe this $94,000 expense to repair the air conditioning system is worthwhile. In essence, if we don't do this, there won't be air conditioning in a large part of that building, and we just don't think that's realistic in Texas.
Very good. Board members, you've heard that description. Do I have a motion to accept Agenda Item 4B 8? Ms. Watt.
I move that we accept Agenda Item 4B 8.
Very good. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor of accepting Agenda Item 8, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous that motion carries. We will move on to Agenda Item 5, which is Comments from Board Members. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we've reached this Agenda Item. Do you have any comments you would like to make at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, which is Closed Meeting as Authorized Under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, school, children, district employees, disciplinary matter of compliant, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, and 551.084, investigation. As allowed under Texas Open Meetings Act, the next Agenda Item 6, Closed Meeting, we do have one item for discussion in closed meetings, specifically Agenda Item 6A, which is the student, excuse me, Dr. Burns, the superintendent's evaluation. And so at this time, this meeting is going to be recessed at 8:28 to go into closed Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is reconvened in open session at 8:49 PM. Board members, is there anything discussed during closed meeting that requires board action at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 8. Agenda Item 8 is adjournment. And by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:49. Thank you all for being here.